Good evening, councillors, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this full council meeting. I would now like to invite Mayor's Chaplain, Father David Stevenson from St Bartolfs to lead us in prayers. Thank you. Thank you, Father David. That's it. Thank you. Please be seated. Do we have any apologies for absence this evening, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have three apologies from councillors Drayton, Sivikien and Riley. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Executive. Are there any declarations of interest in respect of items on the agenda?
There are no hands sharing, Madam Mayor.
To sign the minutes of the annual meeting of the council held on the 20th of May 2024. Thank you. Are there any communications?
There are none, Madam Mayor.
Are there any deputations or petitions?
There are none, Madam Mayor.
Are there any questions from members of the council?
We've received four questions, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Chief Executive. I believe we have a question to the council from councillor Stephen Woodley to councillor Andorian. Thank you, councillor Woodley.
Yes, it is now, just now, yeah. Right. Question of the leader of the council, councillor Andorian. In 2018, it was decided to reduce the mayoral budget and as a consequence its public image and that of our borough was diminished. Up to 2018, the mayoral chains of office were collected from the municipal buildings by an officer who would drive the mayoral car to the residence of the mayor, correctly adorn the mayor with the chains of office, drive the mayor to the mayoral event and escort the mayor at the event, providing both safety and security, and then return both the mayor and the mayoral regalia to their respective residences. At all times, the security of the mayor and the valuable regalia worn by the mayor were safely preserved. Given the fact that Boston needs to use every opportunity it has to promote itself and our mayoralty is an historical asset envied by other councils, do you agree with me that now is the time to restore the status of the mayoralty by reinstating full officer support, including the provision of a mayoral car?
Councillor Woodley. Councillor Andorian, would you like to respond?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to thank councillor Woodley for notice of his question. I wasn't a part of the council when it took the decision to make the mayor's officer role redundant and to remove the provision of a mayoral car. I don't think I would have supported such a move if I'd been given a vote. Having had the honour of serving as a mayor myself now, I would agree with you that there were occasions where it was extremely difficult to attend functions and events on my own, or even when I was accompanied by my gorgeous consort. For example, I can recall standing in a windy rainy outdoor public car park trying to put the chains on early in my tenure and I felt quite vulnerable and a tad uncomfortable. Having said that, the world has moved on, mostly due to the huge reduction in public finances awarded to local government and the majority of councils who have civic mayors have also reduced the peripheral niceties such as cars and attendant officers. I am mindful too of the lack of social trust which exists among local residents and I think if we were to overturn this particular decision, it would be highly unpopular with the community that we serve. So in this occasion, in answer to your question, I would like to point out that I do not agree that this is the time to reinstate the mayoral car and mayor's officer role. I would like to point out that the mayor is fully supported by a civic officer and the mace bearer along with the wider democratic services team. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Andorian. Councillor Woodley, do you have a supplementary question?
Firstly, I'd like to thank the leader of the council for her answer. You weren't on the council when this decision was made. I was, I sat in the scrutiny meeting and condemned what was going on. It was all past the cabinet and they made their decision. I wasn't a part of the cabinet at the time. So, under Boston Borough Council's unaudited financial statements 2023/24, brackets, Appendix A, page 11, Audit and Governance Committee report, sorry, dated 8th of July, the fallout turn delivered an under-budget spend of £458,000. This budget surplus has been transferred to council reserves. So surely you agree that there is sufficient cash available both to restore the mayoralty to its former standard and still need some cash available to add to our burgeoning reserves? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Woodley. Councillor Andorian.
Yeah, thank you, councillor Woodley. I think, again, well, you raise a valid point around everything about to do with the mayor and the esteemed role that they have in the borough. I stand by my answer. The finances, while they may seem flush to you, looking down the tracks towards 25, 26, 26, 27, things start to really grip and bite. And I know that my colleague councillor Gosch is having to think very seriously about how we manage our budget going forward. So any spare money that's been put into reserves, I can assure you will be allocated to a very good home and on this occasion it won't be the home of the mayor's budget. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Woodley, I believe you have another question for the deputy leader. Sorry, the leader, I do apologise.
Sorry. Thank you, Madam Mayor. My second question. As a result of the recent general election, Boston now has a new Member of Parliament. Have you had the opportunity to quiz our new MP on how he intends to represent the interests of both residents and businesses in our borough with the Local Government Association's special interest group, Internal Drainage Board levies particularly in mind? Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Andorian, would you like to respond?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to thank councillor Woodley again for notice of his question. After the results of the general election were announced, I wrote to our new MP, Mr Richard Tice, on behalf of all of you as elected members and on behalf of all the residents of the borough, and I wrote to congratulate him on his success. My first meeting with him is scheduled for tomorrow morning and I have prepared a thorough briefing note on what I consider to be the most important topics facing our residents and this council. I am hopeful that he will be an active, busy constituency MP and in order that he can keep himself in touch with local issues, I will offer to meet with him on a regular basis, just as I did with Matt Morment. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Andorian. Councillor Woodley, do you have a supplementary question? Thank you.
Don't want to bore anybody, but anyway. Now, the ongoing impact of the IDB precepts on the borough's overall income is a major source of concern, given that the IDB's precepts account for more than half of the Borough Council's tax income. In January, the previous government awarded additional £3 million funding for this current year to be given to the council's most impacted by the levies. Have you received confirmation of the funding allocation for Boston Borough Council? Again, a written answer is appropriate if you want.
Councillor, do you wish to respond?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I will take the opportunity to respond so that everyone can hear. You will be pleased to know councillor Woodley that the IDB levy is the first item on my briefing note with Mr Tice tomorrow. I think it's hugely important and in fact it's one of the most important issues that we have to deal with as a council. I know that officers have already been in touch with all the other member councils of the special interest group. They've arranged a letter to go to all the new MPs that have been elected or re-elected and I know they're planning an event at the House of Commons to strike while the irons hot, while all those first-time MPs are still bright-eyed and bushy-tailed and willing to get involved in local matters such as this. So it's top of the agenda, it's very important and we will continue lobbying until we get a satisfactory result. To the £3 million that was awarded, sadly councillor Woodley, this council hasn't been notified of its allocation and that goes along with a number of funding streams that the last Conservative government announced. They got all the kudos for announcing millions of pounds here and millions of pounds over there, but actually didn't ever deliver the funds. We are particularly concerned about the levelling up partnership funding that was awarded and that is a priority for us taking that forward. So we have got a lot of work to do. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Andorian. Councillor Woodley, I believe you have yet another question. You have been busy.
Well, there aren't many to come. I apologise for that. Referencing the corporate peer challenge report and the action plan, it appears a significant proportion of our workforce feel less valued and informed with fewer opportunities for development. It also notes that sickness and mental health issues in particular have increased across the partnership. The report identifies that the Boston Borough Council should agree an action plan to address the organisational health performance issues. It's not clear within the action plan at the end of the report where these issues of organisational health performance are to be tackled. My question is, what is the action plan? Well, of course, actually, this question had been written for Wednesday and of course we had a briefing, I think it was on the Thursday. Anyway, councillor Andorian.
Thank you, councillor Woodley. Councillor Andorian, would you like to respond?
I'm happy to respond. Did you want, are you withdrawing the question?
Pardon?
Are you withdrawing the question?
No, well, it's up to you. You want, do you wish to answer it or do you wish to...
Well, I'm just thinking about, it's a very long answer. Do you want me to circulate the answer to council in writing?
Yes, that's fair enough.
Would you be happy with that?
That's fine, I'm always happy with answers in writing.
Yeah. I'll circulate it to council, just to see if Paul did everything up, Madam Mayor. Very long answer.
Thank you, councillor Andorian. I think that would be quite appropriate to do that. So I take it there's no supplementary question, councillor Woodley?
I have one, yes.
Okay, right.
Okay. And again, if you want a written answer, that's fine. It may well be incorporated in the answer to the other one. And the supplementary is this. I detect a weariness among some of our key workers who nevertheless continue to deliver a first-class service to our borough residents. There seems a feeling that the partnership has ripped the heart out of Boston Borough Council. That works for those at the top, oh, sorry, that it works for those at the top, but less so for those at the bottom. The message seems to indicate that benefits, if there are any, are not widely shared across the partnership. The report recognises the issue. Do you recognise it and what are your solutions to resolve it? And I think perhaps a written answer would be the best thing here.
Thank you, councillor Woodley. Councillor Andorian, do you wish to respond now or in a written response?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will provide a written response to that. I just did want to say, Madam Mayor, that if there were any viewers watching this council meeting or they stumbled onto YouTube mistakenly and ended up in here somehow, that when a member provides a written answer, it is always recorded in the minutes. So I didn't want them to be disenfranchised. But yes, I will provide it to you and circulate it to all members. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Andorian. Councillor Woodley, you have a question now to councillor Gosch. Thank you.
Councillor Gosch, yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Referencing the corporate peer challenge and the action plan, it appears that Boston Borough Council is facing a budget gap of £990,000 in this financial year, rising of the next four years to £2.1 million. Given the impact of the IDB levies on budgets and the likelihood of further increases, do you foresee that the reserves would have to be used to bridge the gap in funds?
Councillor Gosch, would you like to respond?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you councillor Woodley for this question. I can confirm there are no plans to use reserves on an ongoing basis to support the revenue position for the council in the medium term. I think we would agree that the use of reserves to support revenue is not a sustainable solution and we need to manage within the context of a balanced budget with savings and efficiency plans as required. Where appropriate, we will consider the use of reserves to manage timing issues for efficiencies or to support invest-to-save opportunities. On a positive, we are seeking to replenish our reserves where possible following the significant use of reserves by the previous administration. We, of course, continue our extensive lobbying of the new government with regards to the financing of the significant IDB levy increases we have seen over the past few years and potentially into the future. However, I can confirm that we are considering what a worst-case position might look like if this funding is not forthcoming, although I think we all accept this will be incredibly challenging. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Gosch. Councillor Woodley, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, Madam Mayor. The last time I hoped we were standing up. The report identifies that Boston Borough Council would have to accelerate its service review programme if it's able to address the long-term budget gap. Given that the widening funding gap, do you consider that finding alternative funding streams is the only viable alternative to a service review, which will inevitably result in reductions of staff?
Thank you, councillor Woodley. Councillor Gosch, do you wish to answer?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, thank you councillor Woodley for this question. We have a variety of options available to us which we are exploring. Better shared procurement, sharing of services and IT, reducing costs through insourcing and outsourcing, for example, GMLC, providing services differently and more efficiently using IT to the best of our ability, continuing to carefully look at our fees and charges and opportunities to drive income. Service reviews do not mean reductions in staff, as in some cases we cannot recruit in specialist areas such as planning and we need to look at how we can deliver services in more efficient ways within the constraints of what is still a very challenging recruitment environment. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Gosch. Moving on, are there any questions from members of the public? We have no one here tonight, so...
No, there are none, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. We will now move on to the agenda item this evening, the first being Audit and Governance Committee. Can I please ask councillor Pierpoint to present the minutes? Thank you, councillor Pierpoint.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the chairman of the Audit and Governance Committee, we've presented the committee meeting notes to you. This is just for noting only, so I just ask that the council take this as noted, all the decisions were made at the time, this is just for noting. Thank you.
Thank you. The minutes are for the council to note owners, so if everybody's content, we will move on to the next item. The second item on tonight's agenda is Hackney carriage and private hire licensing policy. Can I ask councillor Broughton to introduce this item, this report, please? Councillor Broughton, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The council's policy document in respect of all aspects of the taxi licensing regime has recently been reviewed. The proposed policy was presented to the Regulatory and Appeals Committee on the 12th of December 2023 and was followed by a five-week consultation period with stakeholders. Commence from the consultation was considered by the committee on the 12th of March and the policy was amended as deemed appropriate. Previously, there was two separate policy documents, one related to private hire licensing and the other related to Hackney carriage licensing. Much of the information contained within the two was the same and the proposed policy has combined those documents to transform them into one robust policy covering all aspects of the taxi licensing regime. In addition to combining the policies, sections have been added to provide information on matters such as legislation, the council's principles, the objectives which the policy seeks to promote and the stakeholders with whom we will consult over any policy reform. New information has also been added to provide a clear structure on how the council would determine applications. Whilst most of the amendments to the policy are non-material and do not impact the licensed trade, there are several new requirements which will have an impact, including the adoption of a vehicle age restriction as detailed in paragraph 4.2 of the policy and on page 91, Appendix 8. The introduction of a penalty point scheme. The penalty point scheme will offer a mechanism for ensuring a strong enforcement regime with penalties for those who do not hold high regard for public safety and the promotion of high standards for licensed drivers and vehicles. Information on the scheme can be found at Appendix 13 of the policy, pages 104 to 106, and totals 49 conditions in total. A mandatory requirement for applicants to evidence registration on the DBS update service prior to a licence being granted or renewed. The proposed policy sets out a clear framework to aid the council in determining applications and regulating taxi licensing. It also includes clear information for applicants and licensees on how to obtain and comply with licenses. I would therefore ask that the council approve the adoption and publication of the policy. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Broughton. Is there a second there and if so, would you like to reserve your right to speak?
Madam Mayor, I'll second that and I'll reserve my right, please.
Are there any speakers on this item? Thank you, councillor Evans.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. All in all, this is a good document, I haven't got anything against it, but at the meeting, I do remember we were discussing whether or not the points system would be reviewed after 12 months, really to ensure that the offences are neither too lenient or too severe. Could you just confirm that this is still the case? Thank you.
I'll sum up at the end, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Are there any more speakers? In that case, I'll go to you, back to you, councillor Mountain, too.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I just want to pass on my thanks to Anna MacDowell and her team for going through these two documents that were originally quite lengthy and quite laborious to read through. The simplification that she's put through and her team's put through on to these documents actually makes it much more appealing to read. Although it's still statute and still a lot of legal legislation within there, the common man can understand it. It's certainly dived with a fair and clear format with focus on public safety. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mountain. Councillor Broughton, as a proposer of the recommendations, would you like to sum up?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, councillor Evans. Just to point out, 2.7 on page 103 does actually explain that to enable licence holders to familiarise themselves with the scheme, any points awarded during the first six months from adoption will have a maximum 12-month retention period. Any points awarded at the end of those six months will be subject to the standard retention period of 36 months. So yes, we will be continuing with that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. We will now move to the vote. All those in favour? Against? Any abstentions? I think clearly carried. Thank you. The next item on tonight's agenda is the appointment to outside body. There is one vacancy on the Black Slough Drainage Board. Are there any nominations for this vacancy? Now, who put the hand up first? Councillor Cantwell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It would be my pleasure to propose councillor Evans for this vacancy. He has done a lot of work on With and Forth and has shown his due diligence on drainage board matters.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to second that. Thank you.
Any more nominations? Councillor Broughton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to propose councillor Andorian for this position as obviously as councillor Woodley and everybody else on the council understand how the IDB needs to have some clarity and everything and I think councillor Andorian would be perfect for that role.
role.
Can I have a second please for that?
I'd like to second councillor Dorian, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
So we need to now take the vote. So first we will vote on those in favour of councillor Evans taking the appointment to the Black Slough IDB. And can we now have a vote to take the vote for councillor Dorian? Councillor Dorian is duly elected to the post on the Black Slough Drainage Board. Thank you. The agenda, the independent remuneration panel. The final item on tonight's agenda is the independent remuneration panel. So can I please ask monitoring officer, Mr John Medler, to present this, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, members. You'll recall at the previous council meeting, you appointed two temporary members to start the work of the independent remuneration panel, and that work has commenced. They have written out to all of you as members, seeking your views on the current scheme. So I would just firstly take this opportunity to encourage you to respond to that email that's gone out to all of you. The purpose of tonight's report though is to look at the, is an interim report, to look at the co-opted independent members allowance on the Audit and Governance Committee. Currently, there's two vacancies on the committee, and they're shortly due to go out to advert across the partnership, along with our partner councils, the East Lindsay District Council and South Holland District Council, and they've taken the opportunity to have a look at the allowance payable. That allowance at Boston is slightly lower than that in South Holland and East Lindsay, and therefore they've made a recommendation to you as a council to effectively ensure that the allowance is at an equal rate across the three authorities. So there's two proposals, recommendations in your report. The first is that the members allowance scheme be updated to include the co-opted independent members allowance, and secondly, that the allowance for the co-opted independent members of the Audit and Governance Committee be increased to £650 per annum with immediate effect. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Is there a proposer for this? Councillor Pierpoint.
I propose this, Madam Chairman. Sorry, Madam Mayor, make your pardon. I move on both of those counts. Thank you.
Is there a second? If so, would you like to reserve your right to speak? Thank you councillor Dorian.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to second the recommendations, and I will reserve my right to speak. Thank you.
I think these people on the independent panel are very important people. Obviously, they're going to be looking at all the allowances for the various members of the committee, and I think it's important that we give them the support and encouragement, and that we remunerate them to the actual amount of money that I think they're actually worth, and they're going to be doing a super job. So I would recommend that we take that forward, and I'm quite happy to give my blessing to those two people. Thank you very much.
I do apologise councillors, I omitted to ask if there's anyone who'd like to speak on this item. I take it there aren't? Okay. Councillor Dorian, would you like to sum up?
I'd just like to encourage council to respond to the consultation. You've all had an email asking you to give your thoughts and opinions by the 31st of July, so you've still got a couple of weeks. I think it's time that the allowances were overhauled, that we had a good look at the amount of work that we do as local councillors, the seriousness of the work that we do as local councillors, and so I would just encourage council to take advantage of that consultation. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. We will now move to the vote. All those in favour? No abstentions? Clearly carried. That concludes the formal business of the meeting. I thank you for your attendance this evening. Have a safe journey home.